This is Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, and it's 5:35. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll remind those that are frequent visitors here that we've moved the flag to the right side instead of the left side, so.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have, on the phone tonight, we have Council President Manke, who's calling in, who was not able to be with us this evening, and so we now have a quorum. Let me share with you this evening, we have two items of business that are, we're going to be going over. Number one, a discussion on RV parking and vehicular camping, and then a discussion on our park ordinances and relating to large events. We expect to go into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting also. This evening, we're going to be a little different in that this is really a work session for the council, and we're not going to open comments, so this is going to be presentations of facts from staff to the council, and you'll be able to listen to our dialogue and our discussion in a direction that we will share with our staff to take. Again, our first is on our RV and vehicular camping, and just in brief, this is our first report to the council regarding RV vehicles, campers, and vehicles camping that has affected our city and citizens for a couple of years now. Again, what we're looking at doing tonight is revisiting our current ordinances as it deals with abandoned vehicles and RV and car camping. The last update, if I'm not mistaken, was in 1960, which puts that about 58 years ago. I look in the crowd, and, you know, we were pretty young then, and lots of changes has happened, so we have had an opportunity through Chief, Matt has really done an excellent job of doing some research and bringing some data to us this evening that I think will help us understand where and what we need to do. So with that being said, Chief, I'm gonna, and Tim, are you gonna be a part, the chief and Tim will come up and address the council. And Kelly, we'll move the phone over to you so that it may be, you'll be able to hear.
Can anybody hear me okay? Alrighty, thank you. Kelly, can you hear me okay, Councilor Manke? Okay, thank you. Alrighty, so Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, and obviously, we have a fairly full attendance tonight at the, at this work session. As the mayor pointed out, this is the first report that we're going to provide to the City Council regarding RVs, recreational vehicle campers, and vehicle camping that's been affecting our city for the last number of years now. I know Captain Simons, who's in charge of our code enforcement, is going to be presenting the PowerPoint that's probably 10 slides long, and I know we're gonna have some discussion after that, some question and answers, but I did kinda wanna summarize what we've gone through and where we're at right now. So with that being said, information contained in this work session will include examples of some codes from other Oregon cities that have provided avenues to address current vehicular camping concerns that our cities also struggled with. In addition, the report's going to discuss, as you saw in the staff report, city costs in addressing these situations, and to provide you with some context to how frequently the police department, specifically our code enforcement and police officers, deal with these types of calls for service, and provide you information about what, why city, current city code language makes it extremely difficult to act in a timely manner on these types of complaints. So, over the last number of months, McMinnville PD and the city has dealt with a growing issue in regards to people living, camping in their RVs, campers, trailers, and vehicles. This is occurring in city streets, public right-of-ways, and public-owned properties such as surface parking lots and parking structures. These situations have caused a significant increase in calls for service to the police department throughout the city, and it really hasn't, it's affected everywhere, from residential to industrial or commercial zones. The police department has been called to deal with these types of situations. During recent city council sessions, there have been numerous cities, citizens voicing concerns that the inaction by the city has impacted the livability in their neighborhoods or their businesses. The citizens have voiced concerns that other people sleeping in these vehicles are causing safety issues with loose dogs running around, littering, public urination and defecation, or in general, just overall, general public health issues. I think it's also worth noting that these complaints are not all-inclusive. There are some that camp out of their vehicles that will, in general, you know, be good citizens or neighbors. That being said, the issues being dealt with, that the citizens have voiced concerns about, are real. It's the police department's belief that proposals made to the council tonight regarding ordinance language will be done in a thorough and thoughtful manner. In additions or changes to existing McMinnville code will be recommended based on the direction of the city council and how you wish to proceed with the information that we're gonna provide tonight. So with that being said, Captain Simons, who again is in charge of our code section, will sort of walk you through his PowerPoint, which discusses some of the staff report I put together.
Thank you, Chief Scales. Can you hear me okay? Instead of really reading off of the PowerPoint, I'll try to just kind of hit on a couple of the specific issues that are addressed in the slides. As has been already enumerated by Chief Scales, the, there's an increased issue with surrounding recreational vehicle camper, travel trailer, and vehicle camping within the city limits. I was able to pull numbers from our partner, YCOM, as far as the dispatch center with regards to how many abandoned vehicles, quote-unquote abandoned vehicle complaints, that the city police department had responded to from January 1st, 2017, through February 8th, 2018. The reason that I chose the abandoned vehicles is because generally, when the, when these types of calls would come in, they would be, they could be coded in three different ways: city ordinance violations, abandoned vehicles, or parking complaints. With the abandoned vehicles, I was able to parse out some information specific to locations that I knew were centric to RV or camper camping issues recently. During that timeframe, I was able to parse out 13, as 13 calls for service with Rita that were in relation to the RV camper or camping complaints. It should be noted that on these complaints, it's not generally a singular event or a singular camper that's being addressed. There are multiple campers or camping issues that are being addressed at every call, so when you see a singular call, that doesn't, that does not necessarily encompass all the vehicles that are present during, during the call. With that, with that issue that I found, as far as being able to really parse out the information and provide specific, good, real data for the council to look at and weigh when dealing with the current ordinances as they're, as they're constructed, I asked YCOM to come up with a completely new and different way to track those specific calls by utilizing the code RVORD, and I was able to pull some information this morning from 2000, or from February 8th of this year, when it was created, to the 20th of this month, there were 13 calls for service. So that just kinda gives you an idea that it's, it's more than what was encompassed in the abandoned vehicles calls for service, but at the same time, I can't really give you more specific data than what is, is included in there with regards to how many calls for service. Now, since we now have that new code, there's a possibility that we'll be able to capture more real data, but since we have the new code, we also will be capturing more data than we probably would have been beforehand, so. And again, most of these camping-related calls involve multiple vehicles. As you can see from the pictures here, these are pictures that were taken either by department staff or local residents and provided to the, to the police department with regards to the vehicles in question that we respond to on a regular basis. These specific vehicles on this slide are in the Dustin Court industrial area off of Riverside Drive. Here's some other vehicles that currently are up on Doran Drive. They're actually, I was up there this afternoon marking the tires, and there are actually more vehicles now in this location that, than are pictured here, to provide you some context as to kind of what, what is being dealt with. As Chief Scales said, there are growing concerns by the citizens, but that are certainly not limited to the loose dogs, the human and animal waste, the urinating and defecating in public, the general health and welfare and livability of the area. The picture on the left-hand side of this, of the slide was, was sent in by a local resident. I can only imagine that is bottle waste, bodily waste that was left in a, in a couple of containers in the same area that obviously families live and walk past on a daily basis. The, the current city ordinance that we have to deal with, with regards to trailer houses, in my opinion, is ineffective in the way that it's, it's written in the, in the, in the fact that you have to have four consecutive hours of living in the trailer house to be able to classify it as a trailer house and then become in violation of the city ordinance. We don't have the staff, and we don't have the time to allot to having a specific code enforcement officer standing there for four hours verifying that a person is living in or out of that vehicle to be able to enforce this. And the reason that we have the issue with taking it to court and being able to provide documentation to show that, within the last year and a half, there was an attempt to enforce this specific ordinance in the McMinnville Municipal Court, and there was a judgment rendered that we weren't able, we, the police department, weren't able to verify that the person was living within that for the four consecutive hours, thus, the application was ineffective or unable to be held, that they were in violation of the ordinance. Since the trailer house code is, seems to be ineffective, we, we utilize the abandoned vehicle code, which is also old and ineffective, and there are a lot of loopholes within it. There have to be, it has to be a 72-hour window before it becomes identified as a, as an abandoned vehicle. Then there have to be 144 consecutive hours of the vehicle not moving before it can be towed. In that timeframe, if the vehicle moves at least 300 feet, it then starts the clock all over again, and basically just moves the problem from one location to another location, which, again, becomes difficult and time-consuming for staff to be able to adequately and effectively address these issues as they come up. So the questions that I was asking myself with regards to the existing code and what it would, what would happen if the existing code was updated, and what would it accomplish, my hope is that the code enforcement personnel to provide more effective and efficient service to the citizens, rework the codes, reworking the codes will also allow for a clear procedures for those, all those involved, and then a better understanding for the involved of what they can expect and what options they may have. Contained in this matrix are some locations within the, the state of Oregon that I was able to pull, their current, either abandoned vehicle and/or RV camper camping vehicle ordinances. As you can see, each one of them address it in, in one way or another. Some allow for permits, some don't allow for permits, some have a real restrictive amount of hours before it becomes identified as an abandoned vehicle, or whether or not a camper, RV camper, trailer can be even parked on the street, or where they may be located at. These are just, this is just a snippet of how these various jurisdictions are addressing the issues that have been presented to them with regards to these specific issues. And of the agencies that I contacted, all of them are looking for voluntary compliance, regardless of how their city ordinance is, is crafted. They have all, they, from the information I was able to gather, all of them have, have received voluntary compliance. Those that haven't received voluntary compliance, basically, they continue to put tickets on them, knowing that more likely than not, they're probably not gonna get paid, and they haven't taken the steps to abate them by towing them from the, from the location for one reason or another or another, whether it's because their, their code doesn't allow for it, or their administration doesn't want to go down that road at this point yet, specific to RVs and campers, not to abandoned vehicles. So the, again, the questions that I have with regards to rewording these ordinances is hopefully you'll be able to give us and give me some direction with regards to what you are looking for, specific to these ordinances, and how they're gonna be addressed, how they're gonna, what kind of wording you would like to see involved in them, and then what, what takes place if there isn't voluntary compliance, what the course of action will be based on the actions of the involved parties. And then, I, I think that we need to really also look at what kind of an impact this may have with the McMinnville Municipal Court, because in the event that we have any violations, all of those will be heard within the court system itself.
Okay, okay. I'd like to note, one of the questions we always ask is, what's the, what's the impact to staff? And candidly, there will, there really will not be a major impact on city workload. In fact, I think if, if we do, if the council so chooses to streamline these ordinances and make them a little, obviously a little clearer, we're probably going to save time in that we're not going to be dealing with 144 hours after 72 hours and continually having to monitor these situations. So our calls are already there, and it's just in how efficient and how we're able to effectively deal with, with these types of complaints. So workload impact is negligible. If not, I would imagine there'd be a little bit more time for our, our code enforcement team. So with that being said, discussion, I guess, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, gentlemen. Again, I just wanted to let those in the audience know that this report from the police department to the council is available online, and you can go under Council and go under Agenda and, and download the packet that would include all of the details that have been presented to us tonight and a part of that presentation, so you can go home and take a look at that. Two things before I open the discussion this evening, and just kind of reading from the information that's been provided to us. The first thing is, from the police department, it is our recommendation that the code will need to be updated to current best-practice standards to provide enforcement tools for staff, specifically definitions contained in the current ordinances. Ordinance needs to be updated as well as any restrictions, exemptions, timeframes, and what action is to be taken if there isn't voluntary compliance. So that's one of the charges that we have this evening. Secondarily, at the end of their presentation, the recommendation is, staff recommends that the city take a thoughtful, comprehensive review of vehicular camping codes and abandoned vehicle codes from other jurisdictions. Once this review is completed, the police department and the city attorney's office will need direction on how best to proceed in drafting an updated ordinance for possible council consideration. And so that is what we're charged with this evening, is learning, and then having discussion, and then using our best ability to come up with an ordinance that will allow the city to be more effective in, in taking care of the issues that have been before us. And so with that being said, let's just open it up to discussion to the council. Again, we have representatives, the chief and captain, in front of us that we can ask questions of. I think of particular interest to me was the chart, looking at the various cities. I, I love the broad spectrum of cities that were somewhat the same size as us outside of the, outside of the Willamette Valley, and then looking at some of the cities within the Willamette Valley that are close to us, so that we can see how they're dealing with, with the ordinance. Newburgh particularly, I, I know Lincoln City is vacation travelers Mecca, but again, just to even see what they've done, so I appreciate those, those charts that give us some, some comparisons. So I'll just open it up. Anyone like to start? Alan?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Bring, okay. There we go.
Chief Scales and Captain Simons, could you give me a definition of voluntary compliance? In other words, is it someone is not in compliance, and you go by and you recommend that they move their vehicle, and they do so?
That, that's correct. Be, somebody being educated about the law, ordinance, what have you, and them voluntary complying, moving their vehicle, or whatever, in accordance with the ordinance, yes.
Okay. So would that be a low percentage that did not do it voluntarily, that would receive a citation? And I think, Captain Simons, you were saying that the citations don't really mean much, they give those, and they're basically...
For the other jurisdictions, or for our...
Yeah, for the other jurisdictions, sorry.
Well, the other jurisdictions, I guess, weigh the option of continuing to issue citations, knowing, based on their experience with, with that specific issue, with that specific person probably, as to whether or not continuing to issue citations is going to be effective, or if it's just going to, basically, you're gonna be stacking them on top of someone's windshield until the, till the windshield wiper falls off, I don't... So as far as voluntary compliance, the hope is that everyone would voluntarily comply with whatever the orders are, within whatever timeframe they have to do that, and that if they don't, then they, then there's some, some ability for those who are enforcing that rule or regulation to have some sort of enforcement action.
Okay, good. I think that answers it. Thank you.
Other questions? Discussions?
Yeah. Hi. Thanks for the presentation. It was really well done, and I appreciated all the information from other communities. You mentioned in your report about the need to have a place for the, to be thinking about where those RVs go. Did you talk to any other communities about how they address that aspect of the problem? If you're moving RVs, where do they go then?
The ones that I spoke with, specifically those, they did not have a plan with regards to where they would go. They just hoped that they were not, they would no longer be in their jurisdiction. Kind of the water displacement, you push down, and it's gonna, he has to go somewhere. And just where that's gonna go is, is anyone's guess at this point. But no, they had not specifically addressed that by identifying a, a location where some, someone could, could effectively park for a period of time.
And, and they, they didn't say that it just moved the problem to other areas of town, or like there were...
Well, some of them had to, were kinda chasing them around essentially, for lack of a better term, and they were, they were also in the process of rewriting their ordinances, but they just hadn't have any specifics to be able to provide me with regards to how they were gonna really address that. I think Washington counties is probably the most specific as to where you, you have to move it within a two-mile radius. If you can't be within that two-mile radius within that, after that 48 hours, if you're, if you've been found to be initially in violation, you have to move outside of that two-mile radius. Obviously, Washington County's a large county, it's, and we're not talking about the city limits, so...
Right. And one ordinance did say escalated if they had to ticket the same vehicle...
Correct.
...of fines escalated. Okay. And then for voluntary compliance again, so most of them, they have had success getting voluntary compliance, but for the ones they didn't, that's when you talk about the ticketing?
Right.
So there's something that we could look at with regards to what is effective if we don't get voluntary compliance?
Yeah, the, the only jurisdiction that I was able to speak with that hadn't had voluntary compliance was Oregon City, and that was a few years ago, so it was difficult for them to really pull out specifics as to what took place. They remembered towing some, an RV or a camper, but they couldn't provide me with any specifics as to how it happened, whether or not they had to force anyone out of the RV or camper, or if it was unoccupied when they, when they towed it, other than just the, the overall, general, we had to tow it, and, and that was it, so.
All right. And none that you know of have been challenged in court, like you've had the experience where with the trailer, the...
Correct.
So we don't know...
To my knowledge, none of the ones that were addressed in, in the, in the matrix have had a challenge in court that has not been upheld by, by the court as far as the ordinance, the way that it was crafted then.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Again, our ordinance is so archaic that I think it's, I mean, in 1960, I don't believe that our forefathers thought of the, of the, of 2018 and where people are at. I would also like to, there are numerous RV locations in the county and even within the city that have slots available. In fact, I was talking to the planning director earlier today, that I know Three Mile Lane is, does have spaces open, so there are places to go and park.
So potentially, you could be helping give them information about different places that you could go that are legal?
Correct.
And what the costs are of that.
We would be happy to do that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any, any questions of the chief or captain?
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation and for the thoughtful approach you've taken to... Can you guys hear me? Sorry. Thanks for the, thanks for the information and for the thoughtful approach you've taken to trying to address this issue. Do you have a sense of how big the permanent resident population of folks who are overnight camping in McMinnville is? I mean, I know we've done some surveys, but is there, how many people are we really talking about?
I don't have any direct numbers to be able to provide you at this point. That is something that we could, we could, we could obviously look at, trying to figure that out, though.
Well, I mean, I understand the problem on Doran Drive, and I understand that there's issues on Riverside Drive. I just wanna kinda get a sense for what the scale is, and the reason why I'm asking is that you described other communities attempting enforcement action, and it sounds like what you're describing is, you know, people are moving maybe three miles away, but they're still essentially in violation of the ordinance that we create. I'm trying to wonder, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way that we can kind of stop that whack-a-mole process from happening.
And, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, please.
You know, just from the, off the top of my head, from the photos that I see, I'm betting we're dealing with a population under 40 or 50, I would, I would surmise, just based on the, on the numbers. And again, they mainly congregate in those two locations. You'll get some downtown, some people that are living out of a truck or something to that effect, but the concentration, I would be willing to bet, of those high-density types are 40 to 50, I would imagine.
Okay.
That, that'd be persons, not vehicles.
Right. Oh, thank you, Chief. With regard to some of the statutes that you referenced, there's a big range in fines. You said that the fines are really not recoverable anyway, but some of them are pretty punitive, some of them are a little bit less punitive. What's the basis for the, you know, do you get a sense why cities have such a big range in terms of...
I really don't know. And that wasn't a question that I asked as far as why they identified a specific dollar amount on each violation. It is something I can, I can go back and, and ask, it's just whether or not I can get to the right person as to how they identified that specific number, or if it's just that, that's a classification that they have for that specific violation, which then defaults to that specific number.
Got it. Okay. Okay. You gave us a list in the packet of, I don't know, 15, maybe it's fewer, but several city ordinances, and I have some questions about a couple of them, if that's okay.
Sure.
So Albany's one of the ones that has a... So Albany is one of the ones that has a really high fine associated with it, 2,500 bucks. But they also have permitted camping in certain locations for up to 90 days with approval from the city and adjacent neighbors to alleviate a temporary housing hardship. And what, I guess my question is that we had testimony last week from Councilor Drapkin about their ideas for a car camping program. And that sounds a little bit like Albany's attempt, but maybe a little bit less monitored by the city. Do you have any information about what they're doing with that?
I don't. In fact, Albany was the one, the one jurisdiction I wasn't able to speak with anyone prior to this report. I am still trying to contact other jurisdictions to find out how they're addressing these issues. But my initial reading of, of that specific ordinance and that, the way that you just described it makes sense. My initial thought on that 90 days was more along the lines of, I got displaced from my house because it, I need to do some sort of construction on it and I need to live in my RV in front of my house type of a, a thing. And I need to get a 90 day rider for it. But the way that you just described it, it also kind of does make sense.
Okay.
So I can, I can get in contact with Albany to find out if there is a difference and, and why there is a difference if there, excuse me, if there is one.
Out of the questions that I asked, that's the one that I'm kind of most interested in the follow-up on. I, I will have other questions related to some of these ordinances, but one that I, I would like to ask just for the public purpose, you're asking for direction from us with regard to some pretty complicated and sensitive policies. Do you have any recommendations based on what you've seen for us with regard to ordinances that you think are particularly well crafted that you've reviewed?
Of the, of the ones that I've reviewed and put on the list, I think that the ones that specifically address the issues that we're talking about today and then provide some sort of a permitting aspect, so it allows for a homeowner or someone to have the ability to continue to have their, their RV or their camper on the roadway in front of their house makes sense. Because I think that the main issue at, at hand right now is not necessarily the people who live in the area trying to load up their camper or RV or trailer. It's just the people who don't live in the area that are parking in front of someone's house. And, and those would specifically address that issue and allow for someone who was, again, trying to load up their camper or their trailer to go on a weekend trip or wanted to have it on the, on the street in front of their house to provide, to, to be able to do some sort of maintenance on it, would provide them with an out to be able to, to do that and not be in violation, but also notify the city that I don't intend to have this here-
Right.
-for the duration of forever or until you make me move it, but for a short period of time.
Thank you. And just one last question. This pertains to Councilor Drapkin's testimony from last week. Do you think that some kind of program along the lines of what she's talking about, if it scaled up to, you know, 10 scattered around the city or something, I'm just kind of throwing out these numbers, would that increase or decrease the workload on the police, or would it be no difference really in terms of the workload on police staff and code enforcement?
Yeah. Thanks, Councilor Peralta. I was not at the last council session, but I've been at numerous meetings. In fact, I'm on that, that subcommittee about vehicular homelessness. And I, I will say that under Counselor Drapkin's model and the model that Spring, Eugene, I guess, is it's a private partnership with the government in that the private entities are monitoring and managing those sites. And I do, I don't know, I, I do see that that issue, I don't think they run, they're not, they're, they're kind of parallel. I mean, I don't think you need to solve one before the other. I do think that that's a long-term solution that Counselor Drapkin is working on. But that being said, I do think that a program like that does assist those that have this, they're in, they have an inability to get housing for whatever reason because of, they, they, you know, they're just trying to get back on their feet. I think that's where that program really, in, in Eugene Springfield area is really helpful, is that they're trying to help those, they're trying to plug them into some resources to get them back on their feet and in, and in, in, in a permanent type of housing.
Yeah. Kind of a transitional process of 90 days to get you on your feet-
Yeah.
-is what I understand.
You're correct, Mayor Hill.
Thank you. Adam, any, any questions? Oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Just a good comment on the information that she presented in the last meeting. I was quite impressed with the work she's done, but you have to keep in mind that Eugene has been working on this process for 20 some years and they're quite far along the way. We are just in the fledgling stage. We don't even have a location yet. So to tie this with what we're doing tonight, really, you know, I think there's a possibility there for the future, but I don't see that that is really something that would tie into what we're dealing with tonight.
And I, I would agree with Counselor President Manke that, that we, we've got two things in front of us. We've got ordinance that we need to talk about tonight and, you know, I, I appreciate the report talking about the humanitarian impact and that, you know, we need to take these moving parts into consideration, but some of that can be in the timing of how we go about in enforcing that then and, 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 and the educational process. So, Adam, any questions for?
I guess my main question would be in the matrix that you guys presented and the consequences, some of the jurisdictions do state they have an abandoned vehicle procedure or they boot a vehicle or something like that, but the presentation talks about voluntary compliance. So have they just not had to result to an abandoned vehicle process or?
Correct.
Okay.
Specific to RVs and campers. Now, if they have abandoned vehicles, then they address those as abandoned vehicles, but not as the RV camper.
Okay.
Does that make sense as far as the, the difference between the two?
Yeah. Occupied vehicle versus unoccupied vehicle.
Essentially.
Is our abandoned vehicle ordinance, is it tight right now or it's pretty loose, right?
Pretty loose. It's, it's loose. There's, there's a lot of loopholes in it. There's a lot of time that has to expire before we can do any enforcement action. And if a person was to move their vehicle 300 feet in that timeframe, it starts the clock all over again.
So in this ordinance for RVs and campers, we can also put in an update to abandoned vehicles?
Correct.
I think so.
So in your professional opinion, if we put in, if you don't have current tags or insurance, your vehicle is technically abandoned if it's on a city's public street?
Correct.
Yes.
I'd be in favor of something like that. It's pretty cut and dry. It makes it easy for your officers. You run the plate, they have insurance, they have current tags or they don't. As far as the RV and camping goes, I think there does need to be a, a nominal, you know, punitive fee attached to it, even if citations do stack up on a windshield. I don't think $15 a day like Oregon City has is going to really have an effect on anybody. You know, I, I also don't think that $500 or $2,500 a day is realistic either, so.
I think there has to be a happy medium there somewhere.
Yeah.
Something that's going to be effective, but not too punitive.
I think a hundred bucks a day catches somebody's attention. And then as far as timing goes, I would be in favor of something like Oregon City's or, or Gresham's, you know? It's, we know they're out of compliance with the ordinance, so why delay it? Get the clock running at 24 hours.
Thank you, Adam. The one question I have is, you know, we've seen what seems to be an growing increase of, of, of RVs on our street. Five years ago, I, they may have been here, but it wasn't as visible and, and thus, you know, out of, out of sight, out of mind kind of, but over the last six months, we've just seen this increase. As we've done the code enforcement that we are able to do, even though it's very hard, have we, have we gotten a sense of what has driven more individuals to our community in talking to individuals? That would be a question I would ask. I don't know if you have an answer, but it would help, I think, me understand, you know, are other jurisdictions putting requirements on and they're going to other communities that don't have the same restrictions? I just, I ask that question.
It's the services that are provided in Yammill County, in McMinnville specifically.
Okay. That are driving-
They, they draw people in.
Okay. Good. Well, let's have a discussion among ourselves and Alan?
One more question.
Okay, sure.
Captain or chief? Captain?
I was captain.
You were. I get mixed up sometimes still. On the, those who are not voluntary complying, if you were to approach them with a question or a recommendation that they look at an RV park outside of town?
Ah, I figured it out.
Start pushing buttons.
Just push buttons. Yeah, sorry.
No problem. I'm just curious, what would be the typical response? Like it's too far away, it's inconvenient, it costs too much money, it's a free country and I'm within my rights. What would be a typical-
I think you're hitting them all.
A, B, C, D and F. So would there be anybody that would comply voluntarily?
Well, I'm sure that there would be people who would voluntarily comply.
Such as?
I, I don't have the ability right now to be able to pull the specific numbers to say that, you know, 15% would not or 85% would. My hope would be that 100% would voluntarily comply, but that to be realistic, you know, that's not going to happen.
Right.
But I don't know what would be a good number to put on that as far as the people who decided for whatever reason to not voluntarily comply.
I know it varies, like you got these two groups that we shown up on the screen. Would the chances of them voluntarily complying be greater than those elsewhere in the city or less?
I think it depends on the reason that you're, you find yourself in this situation. If it's a choice, if you made the choice to be there, the reason for voluntarily complying is probably not going to be as great versus if you just happen to find yourself in this position because of things that were already in your control.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Alan. Wendy?
Yeah. I still am a little unclear about, so if we have, if we did enact an ordinance, some of these ordinances have citation and then a tow. Some of them are just citations. If you are in a situation where you're just putting more and more citations on a car, what's the end? Like when does, what happens?
Well, I think that's a decision that we have to come to. As far as the city is concerned, is what we are willing to do.
Right.
If there isn't voluntary compliance, if there isn't compliance after citations. What, what's the next step?
And these communities don't have that next step.
They just haven't had to take that next step or they haven't enumerated what that next step is because they haven't gotten to that point yet.
So that's something for us to talk about in our discussions.
A, a good example is Gresham has what they will do.
Right.
And I think that becomes a part of, of the discussion of what the ordinance is going to look like.
Yeah.
Here's what we expect, here's how we enforce it and here's the results. If, 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 if you're not covering the citations at some point, it will force us to, to, to deal with it.
Yeah. Well, especially in the light of what the experience is that we've heard from other communities, we'd like to make sure that there's an end.
Yeah.
That's where we are going. The other thing I wanted to ask is if you guys had a, a timeframe that you leaned towards in the gamut of timeframes that they have, just in your experience, or if it, you're just going to leave it up to us, like the shorter versus longer, 24, 48, 72, based on your workload and what would work best for you guys?
I'm sorry. In, in my opinion, 24 hours-
Okay.
-is enough.
Okay.
I think it gives people ample time to find a new spot.
Yeah.
So, and I, I think that, that's pretty cut and dry.
Okay. And then my last question is, what was your feeling about, I was intrigued by Washington County's fine per occurrence, especially considering the chasing the vehicles. Do you guys, what do you feel about that with regards to enforcement? And you guys are way more familiar with how enforceable that is or whether that would be helpful or hurtful with regards to?
I think that, at least within the city limits, so if you're comparing Washington County versus McMinnville, Washington County, you're, you're talking about a fairly substantial land base.
Mm-hmm.
And in McMinnville, I mean, we're not small, but we're not huge either. So being able to move from place to place is not as, as easy as it would be in Washington County.
Yeah.
So fine per occurrence, I could, I could definitely see that being a, hopefully a deterrent for people to continue to do it within the city limits. Again, you just have to kind of weigh whether or not continuing to add on citations and then adding on dollar amounts, whether or not that's going to have the, the desired effect.
Mm-hmm. Great.
Which is voluntary compliance.
Yeah. Okay.
Could I say something?
Go ahead, Kelly.
It just seems to me that in view of the fact that really nobody's supposed to have a home on public right of way, it seems to me that just declaring the fact that no living accommodations will be on public railways like these RVs or trailers or whatever, one of the questions I'd wanted to ask earlier was what was going to be the definition for these type of vehicles and would car camping be considered as part of it? But that aside, it seems to me that just with the presumption that this is illegal to begin with, that would certainly reduce the police's responsibility for notification to one. And if they don't move, then I think we do need to consider some serious enforcement activity.
Thank you, Kelly. You know, from my perspective, as I look at the examples that have been gathered, two really struck me and I, I think the chief mentioned that, Oregon City and Gresham. Oregon City being just a little larger than we are. Gresham, although it's a metropolitan, but it's rural, rural in nature. You know, I remember when Gresham was the McMinnville, so to speak. But I look at, I look at their, their ordinances and the, and the, the basics of their ordinances and, and between the two of those, I think we possibly have our answer. Finding the right mix that works with us. And again, I think tonight, all we need to do is come and give some direction and, and then let those that have greater knowledge and understanding come back to us with a, with a, a code that, that is right for the time, right for our city and protects the livability of our community. I'll tell you right now, as I look across the, the information received, the abandoned vehicle ordinance should be a pretty easy thing to update. I really think that that should be, you know, whether, you know, the two that I'm looking at has a duration of 24 hours and then we, we can move on that. The, the RV and the, and the camper, again, you know, Oregon City, no time limit and, and or, and Gresham has a 72 hour, but it has to be permitted. And to be permitted, then it has to be, in the neighborhood, you have to have compliance from that perspective. And I think it gives us some, some variability to, to, to look at those two and have a more in-depth conversation with Oregon City and Gresham and maybe talk to whoever would have the, the ability to help us really understand that ordinance and then bring that back. But that's kind of where I'm sitting right now, but you know, it's a council's decision. Any others, any other thoughts?
Yeah, Mayor. I'm looking at, you know, I'm sure there's a history of, of performance in court when these have been brought up and challenged in court, that the courts have been successful in prosecuting. So I'm assuming that these are in place and they've been proven in court. Is that your opinion?
That's our understanding. Max is not, I think, because of the antiquated nature of it.
Right.
Yes.
Right, thank you. Is, well, one question I did have about, I'm sorry.
It seems to me that the whole goal here is to provide a police with a code that's simple and easy to enforce, to apply and to enforce. I would tend to agree with that, that Oregon City and Gresham seem to be part of most of the things that I would be interested in seeing in a code written up.
Are there any pitfalls?
Did everybody get the letter that I sent out, the email I sent out?
No.
Is it on your table tonight?
It is not, Kelly.
It is not?
Right.
Do you want me to read it?
Go ahead. It, it was short.
It wasn't that short, okay. Give me a second here. All right. Well, first, I, I wanted to thank Chief Scales and all the other departments planning in parks that put all this information together. I realize that all these vehicular campers, well, to go back, I think the current state of code seems to me that vehicular camping was not a problem in past years. Portland, which was the beacon for this vehicular community in the past, because Portland services through free federal funding to the cities over 50,000 like Portland, is no longer allowing these camping sites. The funds have run out. They run low on the funding from the federal agencies and are losing business to outlying areas that do not have this problem. The problem is now being pushed out to smaller cities that receive no free federal funding and must now develop their answers to the situation with no federal resources. I realize not all of these vehicular campers are dumping sewage down storm drains or allowing their animals to run off leash, but they are all an eyesore and generally unwelcome on any city street. Homeowners and business owners that pay taxes have a right to city services. They also have valid concerns for their property values. I therefore feel that they have a reasonable right to complain. City streets and public areas such as parks are not placed to place a home. The streets are for transportation and short-term parking of vehicles are allowed. There is no place for vehicular dwellings on city streets or public areas. After reviewing the options provided by Chief Scales, I favor the ordinance of Oregon City and Gresham for the abandoned vehicle limit, 24-hour limit. And I also like their no tolerance for RV camping. It's allowed only by permit, and permits are only in front of the owner's property. Permits are for a short time period and allowed for no more than six times a year. Personally, I'd probably make it four or five times per year. I would increase the fines to $100 a day, and I honestly feel that towing is necessary if they do not comply.
Thank you, Council President Minkie. Kelly, sorry, I, that was sent at 1:00 and I've been in meetings, and so I just pulled that up, but I will forward that to each of the councilors, your comments, because I know you put some thought into that. So thank you. Sal, you were...
Well, the only question I had is, I, when I was doing my research for this, I saw that the city of Los Angeles had to pay out substantial money for enforcement actions on, basically on overnight camping on city streets. And I was wondering, is there any liability risk? Are there ways to minimize that kind of risk?
Can I, I, I don't want to speak as the legal mind, but that may have occurred, but I think also the fact that the city, inside our city limits, inside our county, does have RV vehicular-type camping of spots available, I think that mitigates that risk. That's my opinion. I would leave it to the, our city attorney, but...
I, I think that there are, as, as the chief noted, differences between the, the inventory available for folks in McMinnville relative to what was seen in Los Angeles or Seattle, or, or even Portland. We know that there are beds available at the Gospel Rescue Mission. We know that there are spaces available in RV parks within the city, within the county, in the, in the nearby area. So it's not a situation where there is no other place to go, which is where some of these other jurisdictions have, have found themselves in trouble, where, where folks are left with an impossible choice. There are choices available here in this community, and there are beds available in the facilities that provide shelter for homeless individuals. If, if that situation were to change in the future, then I think that's something, it's a conversation we would have to revisit.
Adam?
What do you guys have for ideas as far as non-voluntary compliance? And what we would have for avenues of that? I mean, there's nothing in this packet that really gives examples of routes we could go. Kelly alluded to would like some towing in there somewhere. I personally would like there to be the what-if scenario written into the ordinance. Not that I would like that to happen, but if we got a stack of citations on a windshield, eventually, you know, the rubber meets the road.
What I, what I might think of doing at this point is, I, I think we have a sense of what we want to do, and that is to turn back over to the captain and the chief. And I think you've got a sense of where we're at with Gresham and with Gresham and Oregon City. Come back with a, a document, a, a, parameters that could be presented that talk about, you know, definitions.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, durations.
Mm-hmm.
Where we are and what we're going to do, a fine, and then a, a, as Adam was trying to get to, a solution if you don't comply, what are we going to do? And if, if, if we, if, if we can turn that back over to you and come back at your earliest convenience for, for us to meet and have dialogue again on this, I, I think we could spend much time tonight. But I, I get a sense that we're on the same, same part of the plate. And now we just need to refine it with a little more work on your part of looking at those ordinances, bringing those back in full view.
So we'll craft an ordinance that is, is thoughtful, using those Gresham, Oregon City-type mode, and we'll, we'll be back with you if, if that's your desire.
Anyone not feeling comfortable with that?
I would like still more feedback on the Albany secondary program as well.
I can check into that for you.
Thank you.
Would you, would you like a response via email, or would you like, that's my, okay, great.
Okay. Kelly, just checking in with you, any, any further comments or concerns on your part? She has to find that mute button. Okay, hearing none, then. Again, thank you for...
She said she felt good about it. Bye.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Chief and Captain, for your efforts. Thank you for allowing us to have a good discussion tonight. I think with the input that we've had from our citizens, and we've had quite a bit, whether it be at the dais over the last two months, or emails, I think, I think we're headed in the direction we need to. I, I, I do, I do sense a need for us to move quicker than slower on this. I, it's before us and we're in a position to enact what we need to do, so.
You bet. We'll make it a priority.
Okay.
I have stuff in the queue, Your Honor.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on a couple of the comments, the, I think Counselor Drabkin did a really nice job of setting up the conversation about a program for off-street parking modeled after the Eugene Springfield model. I'd like to work with staff and Counselor Drabkin and the subcommittee to set up a more detailed work session with the council. We've got a window on March 21st. I think there's an opportunity to bring some additional resources with experience with the Eugene Springfield model up here to make a presentation. We can engage a larger number of stakeholders in that work session and, and move forward that conversation as well, if that's, if that's a little of the council. I'm seeing head nods, so we'll work to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. So we're going to move on to our next item, and anyone that would like to stay for our discussion on parks, feel free to. But if you need to get back to your home and kids, feel free to, to, to leave us. And we'll take maybe a, a four-minute break while people situate themselves, and Wendy can go get some food.
Thank you.
And Adam can go get some food, too.
Well, I want to talk to you about two things. First, just afterwards these meetings, if we don't have an executive session, I'd like to just kind of talk to you because you have a little bit more context.
Depends what I know.
So that's one. And then, two, her parks plan still has, and it's like the only buildable place we have left is that area between your house and that part of the plan that never got developed, the Parks Master Plan. The trail's coming through the answer behind where you're at. Well, from the old master plan, that's like the one big section that never got done. But we also don't have any other new land, so I think on the next park plan, that should probably be included. Well, yeah, and I've talked to my neighbors in that area about half behind them on the coastline, and most of the ones on our street are in favor of it, like everybody.
These non-compliant people are not community members, and they're not free. They pay no taxes. Push it, just push it, no, hold it.
No, I think it'll be used though. If, yeah. Well, it was like seven lanes in the previous plan. I mean, that's a big, yeah, okay. Right, I'm familiar with this, but thank you, I'll keep this.
It gives an outline of the constitutionality issues that were brought up, okay, and then what happened, and then you were familiar with some of the suits. But that's just like a tidbit of looking at the constitution.
Yeah.
Like, if somebody is at place, you have the freedom of ingress and re-gress from the area. Okay, so you can ingress and re-gress from the area, and that's not supposed to be restricted. So you go, hey, you can't hear for X amount of time. It just opens up sort of these, except for LA, Venice Beach has far more money to fill this problem, and they still are with the same problem. In the less far left.
Well, for me, I mean, for me, I, my preference would be that we're able to find some locations in the city where, where we can, you know, accommodate. Because right now, what's happening, I get that you're doing it out of necessity and you're trying to survive. So, you know, I, I...
It's a slight issue, so one's a law, the other looks like the other.
Yeah, I think that's the challenge. And the problem is that there's like so much human need that we don't have the ability to, to really do. And so, you know, I don't know. It's frustrating, but, but anyway, thank you for this, and it's nice to meet you. I've been, I've been meaning to introduce myself, Jacob, so thanks for coming.
Is that the LA one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was the case line, people.
Yeah, thank you.
And that was just what the nicer became. And now it's just an angle.
Yeah.
Specifically, it's not open for anything else.
Well, there, I mean, the big difference is that, the reason why I was a little concerned is that their enforcement was so punitive that it opened up the city to a lot of libel. But anyway, thanks, Jacob. I really appreciate it.
Alex, we guys had dinner, so thanks for your time.
Thanks, bud. Take care.
Help you guys with this.
Yeah.
From the perspective of pastor.
Yeah, right on. Appreciate it. So, the reason I asked that question about liability is that the Ninth Circuit is a court that is a controlling federal court. And what happened in LA was the city took an enforcement action to clear people off of the sidewalk. Like Portland has a set of ordinance, but LA had similar ordinance that they tried to enforce. So when they went and did their enforcement action, they were really pleased that they did it. And they had a homelessness advocate who was in there.
Okay, if we could get everyone back?
They took it to the Ninth Circuit, they struck down the city ordinance, and then all the people that could sue the city ended up with their own ordinance. And so, but I talked to...
This takes us to our discussion this evening on park ordinances and large events. And in front of us, we have a, we've been approached by the Walnut City Music Festival organizers for the possibility of a festival moving to Lower City Park as a event venue. And so, Susan, we're going to turn this over to you, and you can update us with the, the current ordinance and, and the pros and cons to what's in front of us. And, and I'm guessing that this might even be an opportunity just to look at the ordinance in totality and making sure that it wasn't done in 1960, and we're looking 48, 58 years down the road. So, Susan, welcome, and we'll turn the time over to you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Susan Muir, the Parks and Recreation Director. And Mayor, you actually introduced that very well. This is an ordinance from 1999 that we're talking about, so not quite as old as the one that you just discussed. And we do have an opportunity in front of us. Internally, the city, for many years, we've been talking about whether or not adding programming to our city parks would help bring more people into the parks, get them exposed to more, more of our residents and more of our community, and just add some vitality to particularly areas that are not seeing some great activity right now. And you all know about the fire that happened at Lower City Park a couple of years ago, and we rebuilt that structure down there, and looking for opportunities to really bring some life to some areas that have been a little neglected and maybe had some negative behaviors. So, that conversation has been going on long before I arrived at the city. And, and then Ossie and Zach had approached us about the Walnut City Music Festival as a potential event down in Lower City. And we went through the ordinance together to identify potential barriers to that happening. And the one that really stood out to us that is not waivable by the Parks Director, City Manager, Police Chief, is the prohibition of alcohol in Lower City Park. And so there's, we're checking in with you today to see if we can get some head nods that this is the kind of thing that we want to look at to amend our ordinance and make some improvements to it to allow something like this to happen. So, we're looking at removing barriers to an event like this happening, some cleanup and delegation of authority opportunities to clean those up in the ordinances. And then also, there's a potential to streamline and delegate something that currently rests at your authority, which is the variance-to-the-noise ordinance. So, the staff report includes background on those three issues and then discussion on each of them. And really, what we're talking about is that 1999 ordinance that prohibited alcohol in city parks, and looking for, Jeff and I talked about this consensus direction from you, if you're comfortable with us proposing ordinance language that would lift that prohibition under certain controlled circumstances at Lower City Park. And if you're comfortable with that, we could, making that policy decision, we can definitely bring back an ordinance amendment to do that. The second one, we currently have some informal structure in place administratively inside the Parks Department, where we allow reservations to happen at our community parks where there are structures. And we allow some large events to occur at our venues like Joe Dancer Park. We have a local church that does a movie night at the park, but we're pretty careful about Joe Dancer Park because of the nature of the athletic fields and doing our, our best to protect those. We're pretty careful about allowing large events down there to make sure that we protect and, and further the turf enhancements and the investments we've made down there in the recent years. So, we're pretty careful when people come talk to us about that. But again, having some structure around either an administrative rule or some guidelines that we could use so that we're consistent, so that the community knows, and we're transparent, and we can publicize that information on the webpage, would be really helpful for us. We have done some recon over some other cities, much like you just heard on the camping related to large events in parks. And you can see the bulleted list on the second page of the staff report that most cities have something in their regulations that address typical issues about making sure that the city has enough staffing resources to help support an event, insurance and bonding requirements, hold harmless agreements. Some require notification of neighbors depending on the nature of the event. They look at law enforcement and security, which we already do a lot of that under a current fire marshal permit that we review for large events. But we would be broadening that to make this a citywide look at large events in city parks. They, most cities look at recycling, requiring recycling, and looking at confirmation that OLCC has been included in the permitting and the securing of the venue, cleanup and sanitation requirements, looking at the sound impacts... requirements, looking at the sound impacts to the neighbors, and ADA compliance requirements. And then how we deal with vendors in a park, and also vehicles in the park, which we don't currently allow, and how we protect our assets of the park as we go through that process would be important, too. So, if we do want to have these types of events, allowing some ordinance language to be proposed that would delegate authority appropriately for us to set up that structure would be a good cleanup for the ordinance. And then finally, the third issue that we brought forward was regarding the noise ordinance and the waivers that you all currently grant. If we were going to be streamlining a permitting process for large events in our community parks, it was something we wanted to bring forward for you to consider. You could include that waiver and delegate it to be done administratively as part of a large permit, rather than having hosts of these venue, or hosts of these events have to come to us for an administrative permit and then come to you for the noise waiver. So, we thought we'd bring that up as a potential streamlining and something that could make our process a little bit easier for applicants. So, it's a pretty informal discussion. We were thinking maybe head nods could give us, get us going in the right direction to bring back some ordinance language. And I think the Walnut City Music Festival would feel like they got some direction and some acknowledgement if you're in favor of this type of an event moving forward.
Susan, a question that I would have is, you know, we're not going to be able to close a park up because it's a public gathering place. But if we were to have alcohol, would that be in a fenced area so that it wasn't open and kids and families that would be around would be somewhat knowing that something different is going on in that area? What's your perception there?
Yes, and Ossie and Zach have already been doing a little research in that and had to go through those same, some of the same requirements for the venue that they currently hosted at. OLCC will take care of a lot of that through their permitting process, and we would, of course, include them in our review and make sure that we're compliant with that. I went, the Parks Maintenance Staff and I met down at Lower City Park with them to kind of talk about some of the natural barriers that we have with the creek and some of the topography and the road down there. So, there will be definitely a need for some fencing and some controlling, where I think the OLCC regulation is somebody can't pass alcohol through. A fencing material has to be closed off enough that that can't happen.
One other thought that I have, and I think I'm speaking now with my Visit McMinnville hat on. Over the weekend, if I'm not mistaken, I was able to listen to a concert series in Napa Valley. And as wine and food is a venue, it can have a draw of music. And so, I'm thinking of tourism in the future. We don't have a location in this community for music. And to be an additional draw as we grow tourism, and some of our parks can truly be at least a stopgap for a number of years if that were to grow and venture out from what we're able to do. So, I just wanted to share that, too, as I'm thinking down the road. I know we've just gone through a process of, through Visit McMinnville, of having a consultant come and look at meeting places and some of the appetites. And I think one of the findings they had is that they foresee a music venue growing in this area if we prepare for it and allow that to happen. So, I'd just throw that out as a thought.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did speak with Jeff Knapp and let him know we were talking about this. And it was fun and exciting to think about the anchor of downtown and City Park being a part of some of those larger events and how we might be able to utilize that space differently. So, it's, it could be fun and it could also be a test. And I think the Quarry Park and some of the discussions that we have about that, this is a good way for us to test the waters in that venue. And the three-mile lane charrette that happened had talked about a potential amphitheater at Joe Dancer Park. It's a, it's, there's threads of it throughout the work that has happened over the many years.
Great. Any questions for Susan? Alan?
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Wendy, again. So, is that to do or not to do for the Walnut City Music Festival? If there's no alcohol, there's no festival?
I believe, and I don't, I don't want to speak for them exclusively, I believe that, oh, I believe they might be here. Ossie may have just walked in the room.
He did.
I believe, Ossie, did you hear the question?
Yeah. It would, we would consider it, but most likely it would not be feasible because as we look to expand, having that, that money from alcohol sales, supplements, those type of events pretty, pretty well, and helps us keep ticket prices down. So, not a certain no, but a probably.
Yeah. Ossie, on your fall festival, I think that happened in September out at their, at the Greenery District, was there an alcohol cordon off area?
Yeah, so what we've done the past years is we've fenced off mainly the parking lot and into the road, into Alpine Street a little bit, and got the OLCC license to where everybody that was drinking alcohol got a wristband, and they were free to walk around with their drink, which is probably what we would do the same here instead of having a, depending upon what OLCC said, having, you know, one area over there just for alcohol, like a beer section or something. Because we want people to be able to walk around with their drinks and hang out with their kids and be able to watch them and, you know, not be separated like that, and just have the beer drinkers over here and then the people over here that can't.
In your opinion, how did that all work out?
We haven't had a problem for over five years. And, you know, we've just had volunteer security. And it was run by the grain station before, they served all the alcohol. But, yeah, we've never had, you know, we haven't had big crowds. And I think one of the reasons why our festival might fit something like this is because we are, you know, a small festival. We're not looking to pack a thousand people in there. You know, we would figure out what the right number is for that space. And, you know, with a few hundred people, especially when there's, you know, music and you can kind of use the music and the decor and to, you know, so to say, set the vibe to where you really don't have any issues with behavior, which we haven't before.
Yeah. I know it's been eighteen years since the ordinance was in effect, and the face of our economy has changed dramatically from farming to the Hawaiian Center of Oregon and Northwest. But there was a reason the city fathers set up that ordinance in 1999, protect everybody that maybe alcohol-induced violent behavior or something like that that would follow.
Right. Yeah, and I think that, especially with music festivals, as I've gone to, I mean, you go out, if you've been to the Wildwood Festival, and even some of the bigger festivals have been running for a long time, as the music festival scene has kind of grown up, they've all become parents. And so, they've all become family-friendly in a lot of ways. So, even though they do incorporate alcohol, they definitely take measures to, you know, make sure it's a family-friendly event and to cut out, you know, it's not trying to be a college party by any means or wild kegger in the park, which maybe is more of the type of things that happened that led to the ordinance.
Yeah. I guess I'd be interested in what kind of security measures would take place to keep that, you know, area confined to those who are there to use alcohol. Sure.
It'd be probably a mix of, you know, we discuss on how much we need and could be some volunteers, it could be maybe utilizing the Park Rangers that they have on staff and that we would pay them for extra time. And we'd also look at hiring private security because we would need to have some overnight security anyways, because we leave some equipment out there, and we definitely wouldn't want anybody to come and mess with that. So, yeah, I think there's a range of security that can handle that.
Yeah, I know the county fair is open as far as drinking alcohol. I don't think there's any confined areas. You can walk around freely with a beer or whatever you want to drink there, and there are some people staggering around. But I hope that would, that's not the intent of what we're doing.
No, no, not at all. The county fair concert scene would definitely be different than what we strive for.
Yeah. And I think, take note, Susan, of my concern about, you know, was it being fenced? Because, again, it's not like it's the only venue in our park. Our parks are for our citizens and family and for usage. And so, if I'm understanding Alan's concern is, you know, come up with an innovative way of being able to allow our citizens to still use the parks, but when, with alcohol, some way contain that within, you know, the event itself. I don't know, but just make note of that as your recommendations come back. Wendy, any?
Yeah. I love the idea. I think it's a great idea to bring, especially to bring a really positive event to an area that we've, you know, had problems. I think the positive energy will help in other ways. I didn't see in the report a net financial impact to the city. Do you think it will be a net positive impact to the city when all said and done, or not negative?
I will answer that by saying the models that we're looking at with other cities have a cost recovery component of them where we would charge the event for any city resources that are required for it. So, it'd be, we'd be looking at it as full cost recovery for any additional services that we need in order to make it a safe and positive event.
Okay. And my other question then is, I know we're looking at it with regards to this event in particular right now, but the idea is that we will open this to other events as well. In flushing it out, I'd just like to make sure, knowing what event is going in there helps us to feel safer because we know, you know, that, talking about the nature of that event, but there should be protections in place to make sure that we have that addressed in a very strategic way in how we evaluate future events to make sure that we're protecting other people who are going to be using the park. And I think that the similar concerns about that, if we're looking at changing for any event, then we need to make sure the language protects us, protects our citizens, really, to make sure that we have safe events.
Thank you, Counselor. So, part of what I'm hearing you say is the post-event condition of the park needs to be the same as the pre-event condition of the park. And there are some tools out there, and the city attorney and I have been talking about looking at different models for language for how we can ensure that happens. The, to be clear, the lifting of the prohibition of alcohol, the only suggestion I'm making right now is for City Park so that we don't open the door wide without knowing what the, what the need may be. We may get a lot of interest in venues and hosting, so we will, I would want to be cautious about that as we start. And then, making sure that the administrative rules that we put into place with the criteria, one of the cities that we looked at says if the city is unable to staff the event, if, you know, if the security plan that the applicant is required to submit requires more staffing from the police department than we can handle on a particular time, that gives us an ability to say, no, we can't, we cannot allow that event to happen here. So, it puts the protections in place and allows us to have some criteria that we would want to make sure protects us both from a resource and a park protection aspect.
That's great. Well, I'm in support of it. I think it's a great idea. It's a great test for us to do.
And one note on the finances, the nonprofit that operates the festival now is Partners for Parks, which kind of spun off of Rainbow Lodge, and is, you know, has a mission to promote and maybe provide supplementary, you know, funds for parks. And so, we see, you know, our mission, any profits that we do get, we would hope to just maybe use that as some grant seed money to be able to do projects for Lower City Park and to continue to improve that.
Excellent.
Awesome.
Thank you, Wendy. Sal, any questions?
Well, my head is nodding yes to all three of your questions. The other counselors answered the main question that I had, which, or, you know, you've answered it in the course of answering their questions, which is just making sure you get enough to mitigate any damage to the grass and that kind of thing. But I think it's great, good creative thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Adam?
So, overall, yes, I'm in support of it. I think that if we're going to have festivals, we need to lift the alcohol ban. It's just the nature of festivals in 2018. And so, one goes with the other, as far as I'm concerned. As far as the cost to the city, I know you said full cost recovery, but from my understanding, historically in the last few years, we've been understaffed on park maintenance, and so we don't water the grass normally. And so, is there any risk of, like, fire danger there with putting that many people in a dry environment?
You know, we would definitely want to include the Fire Marshal in the internal review that we have to look at those kinds of things and plan for, plan for the worst, hope for the best, so that we have those mitigating pieces in place to protect us. When I, when, after we met with Ossie, the Parks Maintenance Staff and I were kind of looking around at, normally, we don't water that area down there due to the budget cuts that we've done over the years for Parks Maintenance Staff. And they had this sort of, we don't, we, you know, are we going to have to do something different down here with the limited resources that we have? And it's not my intention that we change the level of service to the parks in order to accommodate these large events. But like Ossie was saying, I think this could be a great partnership for a way to bring in some enhancements to the parks potentially by these partnerships, and maybe additional resources. But I think they'll be down there on dead grass, and we'll include the Fire Marshal to make sure that we're not creating any potential hazards.
But David Rinshaw and his team are comfortable with any increased workload they might get?
I think no. I think the answer to that would be no, if he was here. I don't want to speak for him, but I wouldn't be comfortable placing additional workload on them without the financial backing of, here's, here's the, here's how we're going to be reimbursed for that. So, in other words, unless the council says, Susan, we want to subsidize these kinds of events by facilitating more maintenance or more, more facilities or more infrastructure for them, my approach would be this needs to be maintained within our existing budget, and the city's general fund is not going to be subsidizing these events, but rather, they will be paying for the cost of additional maintenance requirements or doing it themselves. They also talked about a plan of the day after the event, having a work party down there. I think I don't want to speak for you, but there's a lot of different ways that we can try and make sure that we have the pieces in place to have the post-event conditions be the same, or at least be attainable.
So, with that, I'm definitely comfortable with it. The third issue was the noise, and so, currently, we just have to have noise waivers for things past nine PM or 10 PM, something like that.
I think it's 10.
It's 10.
So, I personally would still like to see that come to the council, just because not every festival is going to go that late. So, any festival that ends at 10 PM could be full administrative, one-stop shop. If it's going to go past that with how noise would cascade out of that Lower City Park, I think that it should have a look from all of us.
Alan?
I wonder if we could get the PD to weigh in on their opinion of it, and mostly because of the after, after-festival festivities that might take place and the drive home and other things like that.
Yeah, so with these types of events, there's alcohol monitoring that does go on. Our concerns, I know Ossie would be a good partner to work with, and I know Susan will be an excellent partner to work with, so there really is no concerns from the police department's response. There'll be alcohol, there'll be all sorts of hoops that the festival's going to have to jump through to provide plans to ensure their alcohol's not overserved, et cetera, et cetera. So, not a concern, in my opinion.
So, would that be something that your group would be aware of, that the serving would be a limit? And I don't know how you do that.
Most definitely. And, you know, it would go along the similar lines of like the Brews and Barbecue events, that, you know, they're all volunteer pourers, and so we, actually, somebody on our board is on their board, so I think we would mirror a lot of the items that they put into place to make sure that no one is overserved.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, if I get a sense, we are, we're giving you the nod, Susan, with the comments that we've made and notes that we've asked you. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, if, move forward, and you can bring... Okay, so if move forward and you can bring your thoughts back to us and we can take a look at that revision of the ordinance.
Okay. Just for clarity on, we're talking about all three items, including adding the noise waiver into the administrative part of that or keeping the noise waiver coming to you all?
Initially, my thought was, you know, we've had some of the noise ordinances coming to us that just seemed like it's not appropriate for us here. But I kind of like what Adam says, if we go beyond a 10 o'clock or something that seems reasonable, you know, that gives our citizens an ability to weigh into us. I don't know, are you feeling that way or am I just maybe a little oversensitive?
No, I don't think you are. I think that we're talking about a site-specific, city park only, right? And so that's basically downtown. And so there's got to be special allowances given for that environment, to me.
So if we are talking park-specific, I think it's different than an overall overhaul of our park ordinance. If it were, if it were all the parks, I'd feel anything that hit the noise ordinance over 10 o'clock come to us. But if it's park-specific, I think just keep it within the department, you guys can.
Well, how do you feel about that, Adam?
So I only brought that up due to something that you said, Caron Hill Road, that definitely draw the area of neighborhoods out that way. And it wasn't the first year or second year, it was, I think, the third and fourth year. And then you guys had them in your council chambers and it was before I was on the side of the dais. And so I just wanted to give citizens the ability to have input if it's going to go past 10. And I don't think every festival that you're going to allow in city park is going to go that late. You know, some will, some won't. And so I think if you want to make the determination to hold your festival past 10 PM, it's one additional step. And there's a lot of hours in the day that you can hold your music or whatever festival it is before 10 and have it be a one-stop shop. So that's why I brought that up.
So did that give clarity?
Yes, I think I will. I understand where your concerns are and I think we're all on the same page, so we'll draft some ordinance language and be back in front of you.
Thank you, Susan. Ozzy, thank you. This is going to bring us to the end of our scheduled council meeting. We are going to be going into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt from law from public inspection. Again, we thank those that have come this evening, we thank the council for an extra evening out of your month. Again, these will be meetings that are on the third Wednesday of each month where we can have greater discussion and get in more in depth. So I'll conclude the city council at this point.